This is WZRD Chicago eighty-eight point three FM. And we have with us at the WZRD, Zachary Cook. He is running for Lake Park School Board one zero eight. How are you today, Zachary?
Good, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. So are you also teaching right now? How, because we see that you have an extensive library.
Yeah, no, this is, this is my home library. My, my wife's grandmother built a library in their home in the, when they moved to their original location. So it was a Sears robot home, you know, they used to assemble here. And then they got a bunch of bricks and some boards left over from the project and the assembly, and put a library together. So that first family home is no longer standing, but my wife insisted that we take the library with us. So twice now, we have taken boxes full of books and boards and relocated them and reestablished them. It's just something that she's always very, very valued, and I as well. But I just want to give her full credit for the reason it's here.
Well, it looks like it's very well used. Do you read any of those books?
Yes, yeah, most of them, some of them have come down through the generations. So I can't say, I can't, I can't say I've read every one of them, but, but a fair number, yeah.
Well, Zachary, you are running for school board, and you have been involved in technology in the private sector. So how do the two professions meld?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think from the technology standpoint, what I've, what I've done in addition to technology has also been a technology leader and management and thought leadership. So that's involved a fair bit of different, different skill levels from working through enterprise and working in very large teams in a collaborative environment to working in startups where it's been very, you know, biased for action, just got to get through it. And kind of experiencing a lot of that hypergrowth that creates a lot of stressful scenarios. It creates a lot of variety of opinions on what the best course forward is. And it creates like good opportunities for assuming positive intent in others, recognizing challenges and overcoming. And I think that, that serves me well in basically any venture. And I think the engineering background there also kind of lays into what I feel a good role of school boards are, which is just being very neutral, being a good check and balance, being, you know, there to basically support good go-forward solutions and setting visions, but then not, not really overreaching into certain aspects of, you know, making sure that the educators can, can basically educate and just be a role of support there as opposed to one that's trying to, you know, set curriculum items or anything of that sort.
So Lake Park School Board one zero eight, what suburbs do they cover?
Most of Roselle, some of Itasca, well, sorry, all of Roselle, some of Itasca, Medina, and there's another district that escapes me at this moment. I apologize to folks that are there. But it's, it's a fairly large, fairly large cumbersome, all dual campus district as well. So that's, that's one, something that's unique about it. The freshmen and sophomore go to one campus while the juniors and seniors go to another. So that, that creates interesting dynamics, I would expect, as far as for those student bodies and so forth.
And who is the head of the school board? Is it like a president or a chair? Does, does the board have to approve of the, the report and the plans? Or is the board able to formulate policy? And, 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 you know, do, do, do actual leadership work?
Yeah, so the board comprised, is comprised of, this board is comprised of seven members. There isn't, like, no one member really has, has that much authority, but the, the board itself can kind of work together and set a vision. There is a president of the board and a vice president of the board and treasurer. Those aren't like named elected positions. I believe that's worked out with the, the board memberships themselves. This is my first time running, so some of the nuance of how that all works out is something I, I hope to be learning very soon, but I don't necessarily have that off, off the cuff. The board sets a vision and sets kind of goals and what we want for, you know, all of the graduates. But then kind of works to oversee the superintendent, which is primarily in charge of actually kind of putting that, putting that vision into a comprehensive plan and working with their, with their staff and their organizations and so on. So establishing a good vision, establishing kind of a good broad criteria, and then holding the superintendent accountable to basically meeting that criteria.
So the superintendent brings forth his, his plans? And then the board votes on those plans?
Not, not so much as like on a plan specific thing. There are some things that the board will, will vote for, especially if it comes to, down to any kind of funding or budgeting expense, expansion of sporting and athletic teams, things that might result in a need to hire more staff. All, all of those things are in collaboration, but like from a, from a voted point by point curriculum, I don't believe that's the board's role, no.
So what the, the budget, the superintendent will come up with the budget and then the board votes on it? Or is the, is the board able to go into committee and, and actually do policy work?
I'm, I'm not overly familiar with the, with the individual nuances thereof. My, my understanding of the board would be reviewing for any kind of conflicts of interest. So if the superintendent does engage with a contractor or they have staff that is engaged with a contractor to fulfill a need, the board's role and the board's reason for voting that would be to make sure that the contractor is not a relative of the superintendent or anything of that sort.
When you attend those board meetings, what do you see?
Yeah, I've attended three now, I think, although there's one just in a few hours. So this will be my third, so it's my third attending. And it's, it's been, it's been very enlightening. I think the board itself has been, has been like, I want to congratulate the current Lake Park School Board, honestly, on what they're doing. I see a lot of seven and O votes, I see a lot of consensus. I see a lot of great questions from board members that I think represent the community very well. So I, the, the, and then the superintendent allows their staff to present what I found to be some pretty refreshing curriculum things, a lot of data-driven, multi-year kind of, I think, I think very modern, a modern way of looking at different curriculums and how support can be given to different subjects and also how to assess and revise how basically that curriculum is there. And I know that's been proposed in the district these last couple of meetings. It's been a long, it's been a long initiative, but there've been some really solid presentations from staff that, as far as just kind of getting that started. And I, I'm always a big fan to see when there's objective data-driven results and kind of plans to revise. Some of that lends, you know, to a lot of what I do in technology. So in software development, there's a, there's an agile development process where we work in sort of sprint ceremonies. And we kind of set what our goal is going to be for the next couple of weeks. We go for it, and then at the end of those two weeks, we kind of assess as a team, like, how well did this go? Do we need to make adjustments? Are there procedural things we need to change and so forth? So in software, it's a little faster, but I was pleased to see a very similar framework presented for educational goals, right? We think this is the right thing, this is the rubric we have. Part of the rubric is a built-in kind of review and revision process to see what of, you know, as, yeah, it's a national framework. Not every area, not every population is going to succeed in the same way in certain areas. So I think it's key to have just a nicer view of what is working for this district according to the rubric established of like what we're getting the results we thought we would get and are there reasonable changes we need to make in order to, you know, see those outcomes realized more regularly.
How transparent is the board said that you could see what their past plans were? What their, their past work was, you know, you said that they would assess the work. And then do they talk about what they have been working on? And, and about how it turned out? And maybe what changes could be made? How transparent are they in, in, at their meetings?
Yeah, I think the meetings themselves are run pretty, pretty transparently. Like, I think along the lines of what you'd expect in general standards, every board member has their emails posted for questions from the community. There's opportunities for open comment, meetings are recorded. Their, their visions, the vision is set. The meetings I've attended so far, there seems to be sort of a presentation. The, I don't know how strict this is, but the board always, always seems to be where there's a presentation the first month, and then they'll usually hold the vote the following month, which gives a lot of opportunity for public comment, for public concern. So if you're, if you're engaged and you're paying attention, you'll see like the most recent issue on this particular board was if we wanted to introduce a girl's flag football team to the school. And so I saw the presentation about that, sounded really great, really exciting. So as a member of the community, I was ready to, I was happy to see them vote on it. Sounds, sounds really good. And then, but what I noted was that that whole presentation was on the first month, and then there was the vote for, for against was not until the following month. So that gave, I think, a lot of opportunity for feedback from the community on the, on that kind of thing. Because that represents, you know, now you need more coaching staff. That, that's, that's something that could be, you know, a large concern to the community. And so I think that that framework works very well.
Do you see the board members assessing past, past work, like past projects? And then assessing how they came out and how it worked out? And seeing whether they need to tweak it? Or are they satisfied with what, what transpired in their, in those projects?
Yeah, I think so. I think, so the board's been pretty transparent with, they're undergoing currently a full comprehensive review of all like municipal utilities and so forth, right? So there are older buildings, there's always needs to upgrade things. You know, there's an HVAC system that's aging and so forth. So they, they've engaged with a third party and they've shared those audits publicly of basically what, what the findings are as far as what, what money do we expect to be spent? And it's in a very comprehensive way. And I think that's really kind of the good thing. And I think that shows a good amount of, you know, taxpayer responsibility and respect for taxpayers. Because, you know, these systems, they need maintenance. And a lot of times a stitch in time saves nine, as the old saying is. So I think getting a good lay of how, like, how that responsible spending is happening and also making sure to be proactive wherever possible is good. And I think then they share the results of those findings and of those third-party assessments that are there for anybody to basically open up and review. They, they post a lot on their site in addition to minutes. They also post decks and presentations. So it's, it's, you know, it, it's nice to be somebody who's in the community and then have, you know, hear about one of these things, oh, there's a, there's a presentation. And then being able to find that those minutes and those resources are available readily online. They also stream the minutes on, I believe, YouTube. I've not watched the live stream, I've been in person for the meetings, but I know that, I know there are, there's a streaming setup, so it's going somewhere.
And when they, after they stream, viewers could always go back to past meetings and view those meetings as well?
I believe so. I haven't seen a link on the board site itself, but I expect there's a YouTube channel for Lake Park. I'd have to double check.
Why did you want to run? If they're doing a pretty good job, what inspired you to run?
Yeah, it was, this is a big, this is a big election. So the board operates elections on three and four seat replacements. And one, one thing that's been in the area, there's been a lot of more extremist types. They've been bringing a lot of agendas to a lot of these boards. And I, I felt that just wanting to be and maintain a place of neutrality, of a place that focused only on student outcomes and not some kind of agendas and things of that nature. Like, these positions are independent, they're not political positions, and I believe they should stay that way. And there's just been a lot of interest in a lot of these boards from, from more extreme people in the area. So with four open seats potentially, I kind of had an eye towards, you know, who was, who was enlisting for the vote? I didn't see any incumbents were coming back. So, so I wanted to put my, put my hat in the ring, you know, just to make sure that what, there was opportunity for all of the public to get to know all possible candidates that would be on this board. I think very late in the cycle, all three current incumbents put their names in there and are now actually rerunning in. So I'd be happy to share support for any of those three incumbents. You know, I think, I think that's fair. I think a lot of it was not just myself, but some other candidates I've spoken with. Like, there was a lot of concern that there would be, you know, no, no continuation of what current good goals of the board are working, because there might be some different, different direction changes and so forth, potential.
Do you see extremist candidates running?
Uh, yeah, well, I don't. So there's been a lot of opportunity for people to share their views on this. There's been some League of Women Voter forums that I've been pleased to see folks share the stage with me on. There's been some questionnaires offered by League of Women Voters, and I have not seen a couple of candidates even so much as respond. So I don't know where they stand on a lot of these issues. What I would encourage anybody, this is, this is a big race, four seats, nine candidates. I encourage folks to vote for folks that have at least done, taken the steps to go through the, the job interview process for the job they're asking you for. And, you know, that way you can see the values they hold and the positions they have. Make sure that you're voting for somebody to continuation. That said, if you're an incumbent on this board and have not participated in those things, I can at least understand that a little bit, right? You've got a record. But for a couple of brand new candidates that aren't participating in those things, I'm not sure what the hang up there would be.
Do you have kids that attended this district?
Yeah, my kiddo's ten, so they won't be, they will not be attending this district in this term. But my, we moved here four years ago. We plan to, we plan to retire here, we plan to die here, ideally in that order. And this is just sort of the first bit of like, well, my, my kiddo will be in this high school. This is something with a long view towards the community. I want to be sure that I'm giving back to the community here. I want to be sure that I'm participating in these things early and often. So I, I plan to, you know, if, if I, if I'm on the board this time, I have full experience. The next term, my kiddo would be attending this school. I'll have, I'll bring, you know, I would be ideally running again. And at that point, then I think the way the terms are going to work out with their education, I would actually be serving three terms in order to be on the board through the entire, entire attendance of this school. So one day at a time. But bottom line is that it's a long, I have a long view of being here for, as a good community support member.
Have you served on local school councils before?
No, no, this is all new to me. So I've, I've been learning fast, and that's also something I share with my background, right? As a, somebody in technology, no two days of my career have ever been quite alike. It's just a very fast-moving field. So one of the things I've done is I've learned how to learn. So getting a lot of exposure to this, I'm picking up a lot of new information very quickly, which is, I'm no stranger to, so.
Well, since you're quite the expert at technology, do you feel that the district's technology is, for the students is up to par? Does there need to be an upgrade? The, the technology meets the demands of the current level?
Yeah, the, the technology program they have there is pretty good. I know that they're running their sites through a pretty, a pretty standard thing. I know there's, there was a, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure where they're standing on remote learning at this point, but I know that they handled that reasonably well over the course of the pandemic, when that was a big stress point on a lot of other districts. So I, I mean, from a standpoint and from technology tooling, I think it's there. I would be very happy to bring my technology background into a review as those kind of proposals and bids and renewals of contracts were to come up, right? Those would be things I would be very, very happy to lend any expertise to, to see at that time, if, if there's any open bids for new technologies, any competitors or any, any, any ways to increase, I would be happy to be an expert advisor on.
What about the, the finances, the finances of the, of the district? Are they in good shape? Do you feel that the budget is, is, is a good budget now?
Yeah, I think it's trending well. There, there is some debt, but they're actively paying it down. I think they paid it down one point five million dollars last year and on track to do more. So it's a big district, it's a fairly wealthy district. So the budgeting here is, you know, it, it's, it's fairly responsible. And then it's, it's able to kind of maximize the investment of the community into the student outcomes.
So what would be the issues that you would care most about if you were to win the seat?
Yeah, supporting, supporting the educators is a big one for me. I, I recognize that there's a lot of good folks that are doing a lot of hard work. And I, what I want to do is I want to make sure that this board stays, you know, middle of the road here as far as, well, let me, let me put it this way. I, in my career, my technology career, I, I've recognized that there's a lot of bottom-up support. Like, you get results, you have top-down directives, you have top-down stakeholders. But at the end of the day, it's people that love to do the work, that really are trying to put it all on, put, 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 put their all into every single day. So I kind of take that philosophy. A mentor once told me, like, if you want to get good results, you hire smart people and then you stay out of their way, you listen to what they say. It's not always easy to do either. It's certainly difficult for some folks to do both. You know, once you get in the, once you get in the weeds of things, you've always got your, you want to be sure that you're listening to, listening to the ideas of those closest to the problem. So the perspective I have on this would be that educators are those that are there day in, day out. They see all the problem, all the nuance, all of the challenges. They're in there, they're doing the work. And then the, like, the, the, the board would be something that would basically be there as a liaison from the community who I view as the, like, the stakeholders in this and the students, of course, as well, making sure that, that, like, the student outcomes are getting as many, we're making as many positive outcomes as possible for as many students as possible. And that the, you know, the taxpayers are getting basically the most, that their, their investment in those outcomes is, is well-regarded.
We live in Rogers Park and I live, I work at a grocery store. And oftentimes I see teachers buying snacks, et cetera, for the students. I wonder if that happens in your district, do you know?
I do not know, no, I'm not sure. There are some meal programs through the school and some kind of official channels. I'm not sure how many educators are, are taking it upon themselves to purchase snacks. I would expect a few.
Yeah, that's right, too, maybe. But the, the, it's a pretty wealthy district. The teachers have enough support and so that they don't have to take it out of their own pocket. Do you have any political mentors in, in your run? Who do you go for advice on politics?
No, so this is my first foray into anything to do with politics. I, I have talked to some local community organizers that have made some connections and given some support for me. And the one thing that they have said is if you have a political career and if you have political aspirations, the, the last place you want to be is a school board. Because it tends to be a little more contentious, it tends to be a little more on the ground. So you don't necessarily get to start a school board and then advance to something. And I said, well, that's fine, because this is really all I'm intending on doing. So, so that's, so my little bit of leadership I've been given is that school board's not a place to go for polit, for political aspirations. And I said, that's perfectly fine by me. I'm here just to kind of make sure that we're, we're running the school board moderately as possible, and I don't have any further ambitions for politics.
So you said that the, the advice was that school boards can get contentious, but they really don't learn a step toward higher office. Is that what your advice is?
That, that was the advice I received, yes. If you have any aspirations for higher office, you do not start your political career on a school board, because it, it, you don't, you end up with a, like, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot more opportunity for contentious issues on school boards and so forth. So it doesn't exactly put a feather in your political cap if you're looking to earn one, which, which I'm not. So this works out fine.
Was it hard for you to get petition signatures? How many did you have to get?
I believe it was, well, man, it's been a while now. And again, first time, so I believe it was fifty for this position. But no, it was not, it was not overly difficult. You know, we, we attended some local rock the block communities and asked some friends and some family and a couple of community events, passed the petition around, went door to door, knocked a few doors, introduced myself to some neighbors, and, you know, rounded up the signatures pretty easily.
Was there a maximum, a, a, a number of signatures that you couldn't surpass?
I don't believe so. The advice I was given at the time was like, just be sure that you get plenty more than you need, just to be sure that if, you know, in the event that somebody isn't a registered voter and they sign it anyway, that you have well beyond anything of question. So I believe I was, I believe I was almost double the required number, but I don't believe there's a maximum. I think you can get as many as you wish.
Did anybody challenge your signatures?
No, no, that did not, that did not happen. So learning experience for another day, maybe, hopefully not.
That is very frustrating and it takes a lot of, it drains your energy and it drains campaign finances and it drains your campaign time to address a challenge. Do you know if other, other people that were also running, did they get challenged? Or did you, did you see any, did you keep up with that information?
So not that I've heard, I, I, I didn't know any of the candidates prior to running. I've had the opportunity attending some board meetings, meeting other candidates. They're also attending these board meetings, meeting the current board. So we've had some conversations and asked for some, you know, tips and tricks and also met them on some of these forums. No, I have not asked that pointedly, if anybody challenged their petition, but nobody has brought that up as a challenge they've had.
Is there any problem of homelessness in that district?
Homelessness is a problem everywhere. This district itself is, is fairly well-off. There are, there is support in, along state, state program requirements and so forth. There is, there are meal programs, there are some transit supports, everything that's pretty much along the lines of the, of the state's requirements around homeless support.
When you, when you're campaigning or when you're getting signatures, have you spoken with your, hopefully, future constituents? And if so, what did they tell you?
Yeah, the, the number, the number one biggest contentious issue on this school board this day, whether for or against, seems to be a subject of a new swimming pool. There's a lot of folks that really want to have a pool installed at this, at this, at this facility. And I, you know, for that, I'm, again, as somebody who wants to see investment maximized into positive student outcomes, I recognize that that is an opportunity for a lot of students to have a lot of great resources and outcomes. So I, I mean, fundamentally, I'm for that. I will couch that a bit in the fact that there's, you know, there is a limited number of resources. And basically, I have not seen, not that there's not been one given, but I have not personally read over a full proposal for basically how that could work for this district. Especially with the dual campus model, I feel like there's some unique challenges into that. Like, you can, you know, you, you don't have one pool, one facility with all four grades, so you've got transport issues and so forth. The campuses are close, I'm sure there's already shared resources for that effect. So that's an overcomeable thing. But then there's also, I, I think, I think a lot of the pressure on the school to do it is that there's been some community, like the Park District and some other community pools have fallen out of, fallen out of repair. So there really isn't a good answer for a lot of swimmers here. And that, that's something that I think the community collectively might find some room and some proposal for, some, some collaborations with the Park District, some collaborations with other, other units. I, I think, you know, proposals to that effect that have backing, that have clear answers to how the operational budget will be met, I'm absolutely all for reading through proposals like that.
That's a little bit surprising that in a wealthy district, the park's swimming pools are not maintained and, 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 and upkept so that they, you know, that, are they very old and they need to be replaced? It's not the, they can't.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not fully up to date on all the different nuances of that. I know I've heard from some, some constituents directly that, you know, this, we had this opportunity, there was this workaround, and now that's not working out anymore. So I know there are pools in the area. I would, I would guess, I have connected with some folks that are very, very connected to swim meets and so, and so on. And I know those schedules and those meets can be very, very difficult. So it may be just a matter of, like, it's not that there's no pools that are existing, but meeting ones that have the right size standards, that can host meets instead of allow time for open swim. Like, I would imagine those resources are just hard to schedule around.
If they, if they were to have a pool, would they have to help improve the sports scene for the students? They could also compete in swimming?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I mean, a pool would come with programs, with coaching staff, with opportunities with, 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 like, there's no question that would actually be great for folks that are really vested in it in those, in those swimming families and so forth, and as well as the community that can come and spectate another sport and scholarship opportunities. I'm sure there's a million, like, great things that would come from having it. So like, fundamentally, I think it's a great idea. There's just, there's, there's, there's budgetary concerns there naturally. And I just want to be sure that those are, those are well met and well understood before saying for sure, yes, yes or no. And that's one of the things that I would be very, very excited to read over as a board member.
About how far apart are the both schools?
About a mile, I would say, so not too bad. You know, but, but I believe there's transport between the facilities in the event that you need to share any resources.
Like a shuttle bus, right?
Not, yeah, I'm not a hundred percent on that, exactly how, how it works, but I would, I'd expect busing is there, yeah.
Do you know about how much that swimming pool would cost? And would it be on the junior and senior side?
I, I do not know. I know in addition to the initial construction, there would also be, you know, north of a million dollars operational budget. That's something that I've heard from a different, from somebody. north of a million dollars operational budget, that's something that I've heard from a different, from somebody close to it. So that chlorine, maintenance, operational, any humidity, the staffing to maintain it, like, there's not, it it's not just a question of initial groundbreaking, it's how do you handle the year over year operational maintenance and staffing of it as well.
Did you say that yearly maintenance might reach up to a million dollars?
What I've heard is one point five million a year, yeah.
Wow, that's and that's a, that's, that's normal, right, for any pool?
I'm not the expert there, I'm not sure. But I mean, if you think about it, you know, it's a lot of gallons of water, chlorine to treat that volume and everything else. Just just staff and maintenance, maintaining it, paints every, every so often, lining to reviews, filter cleaning. Like, there's, there's work there, you know, there's real work there.
And you said that you want to support the teachers. Have teachers spoken with you and what are their issues and needs, would you say?
Not, not directly. So again, I think part of it is just that I've, my, I'm I'm a few years ahead of the curve on this, right? So so teachers at Lake Park, I have not had the opportunity to interface with them very much because I have no student there. I have no current interest in the, in the building. But I mean, what I would say is, as far as, you know, curriculum design and so forth, there are, there are existing well thought out standards for making sure that there are like age and audience appropriate material for all students. And, you know, they're the ones that are on the ground, they're the ones that get to review that material and basically make decisions for their own classroom with those guidelines in mind. And they would have full support from me to basically to be able to do that.
Yeah, you're concerned, the teachers are concerned about censorship then, in other words?
Yeah, exactly. If there's, if there's any, if there's any push for censorship that has not gone through any of the rigor of these standards that are designed to find good, positive student outcomes. And there's, and there's pressure on educators to basically do away with those well thought out programs in favor of what might be more ideology, like more of an ideology. They would have my full support to basically stand against anything like that.
What happened in the district that gave rise to this fear of censorship? What the, what, what was happening? Who who was active in trying to promote censorship?
Yeah, I mean, I think this district specifically, I haven't seen too much in that way. You know, I, there, there's definitely candidates, there's definitely supports that that go through that. I saw a lot of that organizing through the, through the pandemic. I I see a lot of material, I see a lot of like Facebook groups that are pushing these kinds of agendas. We have a little free library, we installed a little free library on the sidewalk out front of the house. And like every few weeks, there's all this material in there about, I had somebody, you know, drop off a Germs Aren't Real book in there. It was part of like pandemic backlash. And it's just one of those things, like, there's a lot of people that are very concerned, those concerns are very valid. You know, everyone's trying to do what's right for their kids, and I want to be sure that I allow space and room for a conversation there. But like, there's also a lot of things, some of these things with the internet age have been supercharged to where you have everything that, you know, there's certain things we thought were, it's just long understood, right? Like, like, we, we, we long ago figured out the earth was not flat, and now there's a pocket of very passionate people pushing Flat Earth as a theory. You know, the pandemic brings a lot of, a lot of modern medicine into a lot of homes that have not had to be concerned about it, that come from this place of fear and concern that are now trying to push, like, that germ theory as a whole is no longer a thing. And it, and that, that's, folks, I've seen of that in this community with those kinds of like, those, those strong ideas about these things. And they, that's part of where I'm, like, I, I want there to be evidence based policy. I want these things to be strongly evidence based. I don't necessarily want to discount the fear and concern from the community on certain of these subjects, but I also don't want it to lead and be the primary reason for making decisions or changes to well established curriculum with positive outcomes designed in mind.
What the board do to prevent censorship or to discourage censorship besides voting down items that might, might forward censorship?
Yeah, I think, I think that's mainly it, or there's voting down any kind of items there. One of the things that the board exists to do is to be a liaison to the community, is to hear those things and to allow space for those conversations to happen, which then goes towards setting a vision. So if you've got a board that's more receptive to some of this, some of these ideas, they could go forward and actually put some, something in that vision. And that's one of those basic things that I'm, I'm running to make sure it doesn't happen, that that vision stays towards an evidence based, positive student outcome orientation versus any sort of extreme ideas that I think hurt the communities that they gain a foothold in.
If you were to win, how would you remain accessible to your constituents? How, 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 how do you try to keep in touch with them?
Yeah, there would be absolutely an, an official email for official correspondence. I would also be attending, you know, more school events and so forth, which I, I would be soon enough anyway, once my kiddo's there. But, you know, this is basically as a board member, creating an opportunity to support all the athletic programs, arts programs. So I would be available, I would be around, you'd see me, you'd see me at board meetings, you'd see me at school events. And then, you know, if you don't want to meet me at any of those places, there's always a, a district provided email that I would be certainly reading. And I want to say corresponding to as well, but I want to be sure I go through all my, my, my board training to make sure I have all the rules.
The most important rule is Open Meetings Act, and which the board members can't meet and discuss any board business without it being public. That's, that's the most important one.
Right, and I would have absolutely full support for, for, for abiding by that, that's, that's no problem at all.
Zachary Cook, running for Lake Park School Board District 108. If our listeners want to learn more about you, where should they go?
I've got a site that I've started as part of a platform for local candidates. I I built it as a voter, for somebody who's always been trying to find resources on local candidates. I find half the time I can't find anything about them. So I decided to do this, I, rather than make a campaign site just for myself, I made a campaign site for any local, any local candidate that wants to get us a quick bio out there and tell voters where they are. So that is democracycandidate.us, and you can find me on that site. You can find some other local candidates on that site. That's just something that, again, bringing that technology background, I wanted to make this a very easy thing for people to do and give voters as much information as they can about these kind of local offices.
I think we saw two other candidates also running for school board. Are they, on your website, are they running against you?
So Donna Limper has a candidate on there, she's definitely a school board candidate. She's got a bio on there, so she's somebody I met as a result of this. And that's the only other Lake Park School Board candidate that I believe that's on there. So, you know, she has my full support, as, as does anybody that shares those values and shares and recognizes that these places are not a place for, you know, activist ideas and so forth, and they should be maintained on, on, on good, common sense, middle ground values oriented like philosophies.
Thank you so much, Zachary Cook.
All right, thank you.